... At the end of this meeting of the town, of the council of all quarters in this order, you will be standing for the invitation with the coin tonight. We certainly had to have you back with us, Pastor, of course, for praise, and he will lead us into the invitation. Please remain standing for the pleasure of the leaders. Pastor.
Lord, we just come before you tonight. God, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. God, to be able to, just first of all, God worship you freely. And, Lord, second of all, being able to govern ourselves. And so, Lord, tonight, as we, God, join in this meeting, God, we just pray that, Lord, you would lead and guide and direct those that are, God, here tonight. Lord, we pray that you would give them wisdom and knowledge that comes from you, God, that they may serve, God, the constituents, God, that they are here to serve and meet the needs of. And so, Lord, we just thank you once again, God, for this time. God, we thank you for your Son, most of all, Lord, who came and died, lived a perfect life, Lord, died on the cross for our sins, Lord, that we could one day enjoy eternity with you. And so, Lord, it's with that hope, God, that we thank you. And, Lord, we just ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Elaine? Paul?
Would you? Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If everyone please make sure that your microphone is turned on and position a location that it will pick up. Let me pick up your booth just mentally that like that.
That's all right.
Okay.
Do you want to make sure?
I do.
Okay. I can't seem to sound like she's having difficulty looking.
I just lean over, talking to this carolist. To the extent it needs to be recorded anywhere, nobody much wants to hear it upset.
Over in Scambia County, their EOC, this is years ago, I don't know what happened up over there, but they had a system in on each day, it could be to the different disciplines and all like that. It would, it just sat there and you could touch it to speak on that. And it picked up a whisper across from them. I've never seen a sensitive mic so long that was. You could just talk like this and hear the parking lot.
I say I have a question, I don't respond to that.
That's probably an exaggeration.
It's okay. I think I'm gonna get picked up on everybody else's. It'll be all right. It's just the record is off. I've seen all kinds of county, we had one version, we've got the same version of that county, planning commission, you just mentioned we have to hit the button.
Yeah, real sensitive though, yes, God. You could hear it in there.
Yeah, we did some.
They've got something similar in the commission meeting, but they got that doosneck, but it's just live all the time. Whoever speaks is getting this over. Are you ready? You gotta match that. Put some gas in that one.
I have some gas in that.
Okay. If I go ahead and guard through? Yes, okay. You have your agenda and is there any additions or corrections to be made to the agenda or deletions to the agenda?
No, I guess now I can clarify the question on the public hearing.
Give her please.
This is my mistake, you know, I says, I told you my mistake's not the light. We had the first public hearing. We had the vote to close the road. We had the first public hearing. My mistake, I didn't schedule the second public hearing and the resolution. So, I have to go back and do that because the church has given, you know, we've got the deep prepared for the church to give us our 50 feet. We need to close that street for the, you know, for the church possession. But that was my mistake, God.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I went to the consent agenda, I was thinking that was part of the introduction of Brother Thorne, but number two is actually a public hearing. We actually have to open and close that public hearing if we're not, it is a, okay, we'll recess the, we'll recess the meeting and we'll open the public hearing. All right, just explain the purpose of the public hearing. Is there any questions or any discussion on the public hearing? This is the second of two public hearings. We had the one, was it two months ago?
No, it was in September.
Why do we do two months ago?
That was on the other one.
That was on the alley.
Yeah, the first third year on alley, yeah, that one's not through the seventh.
Okay, all right. Any questions or discussion on the public hearing? Okay, most pleasure, counsel.
No discussion, so we just close.
We need, we need a...
Down, gentlemen, get down to the resolutions.
Okay, all right. No questions, any discussion, we'll close the public hearing and we will come back in order for the consent agenda. Now then, is there any, is there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? That does include, if you look at, indeed, the resignation of Ms. Jones from, from the office, which we were all aware of, but we needed to set that best message for the record. She, she effectively has already left the, that floor.
I need to add two things. The development club asked me to add on a, to go to a portable building for them, called the Pots and Pals to put their supplies in.
Okay.
And I need to give you an update on People South Bank.
That's under tortures.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Building and People South. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I make a motion when we approve it?
Okay. You got a motion, second, any discussion on the motion. Hey, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
And chair, yes. We have no one agenda on the audience tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us tonight?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
I need permission to clear the calendar for October and do the haunted house for like we did last year, you know, flipping, uh, Pots and Pals.
When you say clear the calendar, you're talking about make sure?
Make sure that nobody rents it out for the whole month.
For the whole month?
Yes, every, we had all four Saturdays last year and worked out pretty good. We were able to pay for all the stuff we needed, plus made a couple hundred. Now, this year, we got all, we already paid for all the stuff, so everything should be pure property, except for a few items, but we should make some money this year.
It's October.
We don't have anything to do with that.
Okay, so do you let a motion, is that something you can do administratively?
I can do that.
Okay. Okay, I think, Mark, take care of that for you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? We appreciate our shares performance, always having somebody with us as well as our pastor Thorne tonight. Okay, that brings us all the way down to the perks report, which seems to be very long tonight.
It is. You know, it's not that bad, but like I say, I failed to follow through with doing the resolution and all to close First Avenue from the East Rightway of City's Avenue to the West Rightway of Jackson Street. And so, we need a motion now to adopt that, and we adopted that by resolution, resolution number 2022-009, on the issue of closing First Avenue from East Rightway of Highway 77 to the West Rightway of Jackson Street. Washington County, Florida, the council has previously scheduled a hearing, this hearing is considered to weather the ban of the South of the Roadway. And we have done all of that.
Okay. Most pleasure, counsel.
I'll make a motion when we approve our resolution zero, zero, nine.
Okay, we have a motions or second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion. Hey, Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Parker, yes. Chair, yes. Okay.
Okay. All right, resolution number 2023-010 is closing the alley from Second Avenue to Pontier Road. It's been closed from Second Avenue to wherever and all the way through the place north of Pontier Road. This, this alley runs straight through the middle of the new firehouse and through the middle of the Assembly Church. So, we need to close that alley.
Is it, we closed it for you?
Yes, we have closed it.
It's closed at all?
All the way through, except for...
It's at least two blocks.
Yeah, Bill said he don't know how we missed it.
Okay.
But he couldn't find them and I couldn't either.
Okay, and this is the second public hearing?
Yes, on this one.
Okay, most pleasure, counsel, that we close the alleyways.
I'll make that motion. We do?
We have a motions or second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Chair, books, yes. Mr. Wilson, now?
Yes.
Twist?
Yes.
Or, yes, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay. The next two resolutions, I would like to table those for right now, and I'll tell you the reason why. We have a quote, a proposal from Capital City Bank in your packet that is $2,500 per loan, loan fee, interest rate 4.5%. I have talked with the DEO, Mr. Joey McCormick, he's our liaison, and he's asked me to send him a letter before we vote on these to ask if we can get those reimbursed, reversible grants, or we can send him our invoices, they cut us the money, then we send them a copy of our checks, like we do now. These are not that type of grants, and neither is the $1.4 million one that we're getting, but the line credits, the interest rate and the bank fees and all that, a real hardship for us in these small communities like us. I mean, we need these grants, and it's like I told you, we need them, or we desperately need them, the two that we've got now, the drainage projects and well project, but, you know, as far as, and we may have to come back next month and do these if they don't approve it, but I hope, he says he's hopeful that he can get it through, that we can do that on these, these new grants that we're getting.
That's $2,500 on each grant and for a high percentage of interest?
On each grant.
On each grant?
Yes, sir.
Well...
And instead of a quick turnaround, get the checks back, we still, we got $5,000 out up front there, you know, to get a loan from a bank.
Right.
But I'd ask that you table that until I get more information from DEO.
We need to let by motion to table, we need to table by motion also. Is our motion to table resolution 011 and 012?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to table the resolutions related to the TDBG Apple Fund for the work project and the drainage project. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. Hey, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Parker, yes. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, yes. Chair, books, yes. The decision is probably a moot point now.
Absolutely. We haven't had any, we have to readvertise on that.
Okay.
Backhoe update. We have got a backhoe all this way, seeing Mr. Hagan gets not sent the paperwork on it. We got the backhoe, the best price is from style tractor, a state end price of $67,000 and some few dollars. But that's what, and they, we got annual payments for five years. We're good on that.
64, 654?
Yes, sir. And we're getting all of the catheters and everything we need on it. This has been all the agenda for the last six months.
Yeah, and if I remember right, the other one was a 15 law or...
Yeah, they were older law. This is a 2022.
This is a new one for this many.
Yes. Maybe a few less horsepower, but it's something we can do with and exactly what they needed. These guys went and looked at it, they tested it and everything.
This many newer model, uh, and it's orange and not yellow, if that makes a difference in lighting. Starts with a K and not a C.
We already done a motion to do it, but do we need a motion to, for you to sign the things we've already done?
Yeah, okay. All right.
We've already decided on the utility gallon applications that we'll do those at the workshop.
Okay, this, because this is going to be, let me, so let's go ahead and get something in there that says what we did at the workshop.
Okay.
And I think what we need is a motion that, uh, Ms. Riley called and with the, with the questions that we discussed at the workshop that she will develop and that she will rank and present these to us.
Prior to the workshop.
Prior to the workshop, okay, because what we didn't do at the workshop say, oh, we're gonna interview every one of them. If nobody asks to have their name written on, we're gonna interview every one of them. Is that what we're talking about? No?
I thought we'd started just to interview three and four.
The top three.
Okay, the top, the top, okay, at her ranking. Okay, all right, okay, as long as we all are doing the same thing, huh? Okay, that's good. Got that in the, okay.
Okay.
Okay, just, do you understand, just whoever will make a motion, do you understand what the chair is asking for, that, that motion that I just said? Okay, if somebody would make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Parker, is her second?
I'll second it.
A motion and second, any discussion on the motion. Hey, Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, yes. Chair, books, yes.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, cover in your packet, the waste management contract renewal. Now, this is just for your information tonight to be looking over. Right here, I met with Mr. Duke and we asked him to, when he done the contract, put in this in four cleanup, instead of the three, one for spring, summer, winter, fall, the dumpsters in the bag and what they're, you know, they want us to remove the annual CPI cap of 4%. This year, it's not gonna be close to that, it's 2.38, and, and we do a five-year renewal expiring December of 2027. But he's probably here next month, correct, Ron, to present that contract to us?
He's gonna be here with the contract, and we did ask for the, the probably, the thing with the CPI, it's in cap of 4.9, and he said all rates now are like 3.4. It's a five-year contract, if the CPI is goes to five or six or something, in that course of time, at the end of five years, that contract has, has to be renewed so we can add things to it, or we can take things away, as I understand contracting. So, for them to give us an extra, an extra, we pretend days of two dumpsters in the city to take care of it, I think that's a good swap, but we will have a chance to approve that at the next meeting. And you'll have a chance to ask him for other things that need to be included, if there's something we didn't discuss or anything like that. Mr. Bale has retired, Ronnie Bale has retired. Everybody will miss Ronnie Bale. Okay?
All right, you have in your package our notice of award for our DEO, our COVID grant. We have been awarded $1,384,000 to make our community buildings, health clinic, happy. So, we'll be getting, we'll be doing the webinars and meetings and all with DEO on this and providing what they need.
Are we just gonna remodel that building?
We'll have that, that's gonna be discussion when it starts, you know, we may can remove that building and get a top-of-the-line new building for a lot less than a million dollars, you know, that, that's bringing that to code, and it is...
Bad.
It's awful. But we'll get our sign, we'll get our landscaping, we'll get our gazebo if we need, if we still want it out there, you know, things that we've asked for, but mostly the sign and stuff like that that we've asked for, and the partnership with the hospital and the health department for our COVID vaccines, full shots. And we may can do some more with that, you know, as long as it's free of charge, we cannot charge out there. They had to come and do it. But we have been awarded that, so we're, right now, we got, you know, a couple million or more dollars worth of grant funds that's coming down the pipe, and we've applied for a million and something more, if we get it.
So, along with the clinic, if we, if we wind up building, along with the clinic area, we can build, we can build something else that we decide on?
Yes.
To be used for public purposes?
Put it all on the same roof?
Everything on the same roof, yes. But like the outside grounds, you know, we can do a gazebo, we can do a little, you know, stuff that, that we would like to make it look better, you know?
Okay, and it'll be called a community center or a community facility?
Community facility.
Facility, okay.
Yes. We put our possum in a building in there, we can buy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we do, you know, get a top-of-the-line building over there. The library, main side, they wanna move over there, you know?
This is true.
Because, you know, they wouldn't go there because of bringing to code, they couldn't do it, you know, but we got the grant, the community building, public library, it would be a very asset.
Yeah, and if we wind up with needing some more, the library might put some money in. If we, I mean, I can't imagine, I can't imagine being able to not put everything we need for a million dollars at that point, but...
I can too. We could have a big building.
But then, I can't imagine two before the one from $4 space to $19 space.
Also, while we're on the notice of award there, there's some infrastructure monies that's coming down the pipes, and I've talked with Mr. Fox and Deberry, you know, we're wanting that, we're needing that project that's gonna increase our line size from the well, which is six inches now, because when DOT comes through, they're putting us in eight-inch lines all the way down 77. Mr. Escher and Cliff and I have met several times, we need at least a 10-inch line from that well to feed that 8-inch line, because if we got a 6-inch line trying to feed that 8-inch line, we'll have force pressure that will do now.
Won't never fill it up.
Will never fill it up. And also, I've talked with DOT, and they may kick in some on that, you know, to, to be able to help us some with that also, but if we could get a grant, that would be great. And that would be a good infrastructure project, you know?
And that, that money's coming from where?
DEO again.
DEO.
This'll be, I think this is gonna be some more, I'm not sure if it's micro funds or, I think it's some more micro funds.
Okay, the, the one that followed Michael, was that Sandy? We had, you know, Sandy was yours.
Sally.
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 We haven't heard anything of Sally coming down.
So, there may be money still a year from now. The thing about these disasters and money that comes back from the federal monies is you sometimes hear the recovery before the mess starts coming, because what you have to do is recover, and a lot of the recovery costs, then there's like 10% added on top of that that goes to grants to do mitigation or something like that. So, we, we may be recovered from all the problems and still be getting money a year or two in the future for things like that. Is that your experience?
Absolutely. Panama City just finished it, the city of Panama City, it goes 73 billion, just last month.
Yeah.
For Hurricane Michael.
Yeah.
And we're three years and eight months down from that.
Yeah.
But, you know, these grants are overwhelming like that right now, especially for our small staff, you know?
We need to hire, we need to hire some help in here.
But, you know, if you don't get this money, if you don't apply when they're filming down, you're gone, you're not...
Yeah.
Somebody else.
You gotta hang back in the quarter. Okay.
And Florida River Water has asked for a closeout meeting on our asset management plan, which they'll come in and tell us what they want, and they want to schedule that for August, which is a Friday, which is fine, from 11 till 1. They want, if some council members can be here, that would be great. We'll have our staff coming that day, but it's on a Friday, 11 to 1.
That's not, that's not what he did, not at all good.
Yeah, this is just the closeout, the closeout, what they recommend, and then they're, they're gonna recommend the financial part of it this time. They've got our audit, and they're going through and tell us what they think we need to do to keep our system ahead of the curve.
Did you say I was going to be on August 12?
August 12.
12.
At, at 11 to 1. It won't last that long, but that's what we were asking for. So, I'll just let my other doctor be here that day, and I'll send you an email reminder on. Okay. Development Club, they have called and asked if they could get permission to put a portable building down somewhere on the Pots and Pals property, out of the way and everything, to store their stuff in. We voted one time to give them a bay out here, you know, will we ever get moved?
Think it'd be better to do the building with Pots and Pals?
I think so, too.
Sure. Wouldn't have to be as much hauling in.
All their events are down there, you know?
We probably needed to be there, be one or two, and they, they need to limit, they need to limit who, gee, we, we're not...
Right, and then be responsible for.
Where would it be able to wait?
We could put it down there wherever, you know, around some of the others that we've got there, around the batting page, you know, where it won't be in the way, you know, things to access the batting page and all, and get in there and do that, you know? Or you can put it over the corner somewhere.
There's a old saying about hindsight, 2020, when we looked at the building, the tennis court, the two baseball fields and all like that, what we didn't think about 25 or 30 years ago, we or whoever was in our chairs at that time, is get somebody going there and do a master site plan there, so we just wound up, we get here, we build something, we get out, and that was somebody else, and all like that.
We've been a master site on the John bench.
Yeah, yeah, and Johnny was, he, he would get them, but what makes it space we got for any other kinds of things goes downhill and into a swamp. One day we use that, we may have to get a dredge and field permit and build a duck so we can use it on that land. I don't, I don't mind if have some over there if it's, if it's, that's up to the council, but I could, I could on that little flat ground out there at the end of that crook table, just off of the edge of the stage out there?
Yes.
It's level, it's flat?
And it's out there.
I had the same idea.
And, and they could, they could walk everything, they could walk everything from one building to the other, if you could decide to do it. That, that landscape now, that, that terrain down there is terrible, you, you gotta walk across there, feel like you own ocean just about it there. But that's just my suggestion. What you need is, what you need is...
I'd like to allow them to do it.
Allow them to do it, yeah. Please, your counsel.
Wait a minute now, is the motion gonna be just to allow them to do it or to put it there from your suggestion?
Oh, oh, no, 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 I, I suggest that, I think that's where to go, if we all wanted to do that, we can make it part of the motion, but they're just asking us to put it someplace. Would you like, have you got another idea of where?
No, I think that's a good idea, but I just wanted to get it in the motion.
Well, I'm kind of, it's a way of saying it, Claire. I'm kinda like this.
Can I do that, just let the development club do a building on?
Absolutely. I'm kinda like this, it's ours, if they want to use ours, they can use the road that, that. That's, yeah. Is that your motion? Our motion is whether they want it or where it's somewhere where y'all want it.
Where we want it. Where we want it.
We can do that, that's right.
Are we, are we gonna make a motion on both of them where we want to put it then?
Yeah, I think one motion, yes, they can do it, and they can do it here.
Okay, that, that's good, all right.
That's a good motion.
Did you make it?
Yeah, I made it.
I'll second that.
I thought you, I thought that's what we were, hated. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. Hey, Mr. Parker? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Chair, books, yes. Yes, twist?
Okay. Second thing I got is People's South Bank. We need to renew our loan at People's South Bank for our Firdout projects, and what they're wanting to do with these loans, they say years, you know, years, they've always put our money in our account, we're spending on our, our project, and we're sending, man, well, apparently the banking rules have changed, they gotta have some invoice to pay with, you know, then they'll cut us a check, or they'll cut a check to the vendor. My preference is they'll cut a check to the vendor and give us a copy of the dollars, so, if that's y'all's preference, you know, we can make, what we need to motion to renew the loan for the Firdout projects in the amount of $50,000 each, and it's just a polymer, it's just a formality to renew the loan, we've already catalyzed, just renew it for one year.
And this, this loan came back one year?[1771.12] And this, this loan paying back more than?
This loan is going to the Firdapp projects, the park projects. The, uh, lighting of the ball fields.
Okay, okay, okay.
Uh, new piece of, we're not going to do a new splash pad, you, you, Firdapp.
Firdapp covers a multitude of things to build, uh,
Boat rafters.
Yeah, and that may not have been for that, that may have been if he asked me, but, okay. I like what you said, will the auditor accept that?
Yes, he will.
He will accept it.
We'll send them an invoice.
To the, uh,
Vendor and then we'll have, we'll have our invoice, we'll send People's Bank invoice, they'll pay the vendor, then we'll get a copy of all of that, concert checks and all that.
And time and motion stated, that's one thing you don't have to do, that's one check you don't have to do. What's the place for the council?
Make a motion, we do it.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say that.
We have a motion and second that we renew the loan from Firdapp and that we let the bank pay directly to the vendor, a copy of this. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, vote for Ms. West?
Yes.
Sure, if she is, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Or?
Workshop August 11th and we've changed that to 14:00 P M. And I have informed the fire department that we want presence at this meeting, at least the, uh, chief, assistant chief and the secretary. Good luck. Also, far and all the fire department, they think they're going to be ready by the end of August or the weekend after Labor Day weekend to have the grand opening, but they will discuss that at the workshop with y'all, except for holiday. I told them we wanted in time to invite the state officials and we'd like it to have it before Dana and Drake go out of office tonight.
Yes, yes.
So they're going to have a date at the workshop too.
We might miss those two guys.
We know we're going to miss those two guys.
They've been good also.
Yeah, they have.
And that's all I got.
And at that workshop or in any transition that might be making, it's a very good time to count to bring back in house the leadership of that department and that kind of, are you planning on to, recreation?
Back on.
Talk to her first, here.
Recreation, if, if, uh, if they will put that big banana, could you go and show them what we're talking about?
Yeah.
If there's going to be the little handle, the little cook table there between there and the fence, we're, it's kind of real flat and they're right next to
Not on set, yes.
You know what I'm going to?
I'll show you.
Yeah.
I'll find them.
I'll show them, I can play with them.
And I, I don't mind too if, if you're going to be there if you
That's all I got.
All right.
Ms. Parker?
Yes. Okay.
I don't have anything, everything's all good.
That's good. Mr. Wolf, Sam, thank you for meeting. Okay, Ms. West?
Nothing.
Oh, now, if you're back there, Ms. Carter?
I'm good.
Okay. Let me, uh, I think we've discussed this at the workshop, I'll visit Mr. Carter, uh, personnel policies. Uh, can we, how, uh, our employees are at will and how much can we, we may, we may need some help on some labor issues and things like that. Could we, could we put in our personnel policy that you had to have so many hours in reserve before you use, that those benefits are theirs and they use them as they may or can we restrict
Like your paid time off, uh, medical leave, that kind of thing?
Sick leave and the leave.
You could do that.
Okay.
You have to hit an X number of hours as a threshold before you're entitled to use those, to accrue and use those hours, that's what you're talking about.
And you can't use less than that without a permission or something like that or if, if we, if we have a situation where we're making a date?
I don't think you can limit how they use them once they're entitled to use them.
I'm talking about how, or without, or with permission, I mean, if they just, if it's a sick leave issue, that's one thing.
P T O will be something different.
Okay.
P T O, you can do that with permission, you could limit when they're doing, uh, say for some office staffing leads or whatever so that, you know, operations don't have to suffer because of their absence.
It's like the week before fun day, we can say, you cannot be off this week unless it's a dire emergency.
Right, unless it's sick leave, right.
Yeah.
That would be a different story. But P T O would be voluntary, this is the time of want to take off, that kind of, uh, necessity.
Now, has everything gone mostly to P T O and, and is there, is there a definition difference between P T O and annual leave? Probably not all operation, I mean, it is, it's just what I call them. Yeah, well, I think, I think everybody does think we're P T O and some, some years ago they would even taken that and we leaked out of our personnel thing to P T O and you've got so many days.
Yes, sir. Hours, safety period or per month, whatever they work?
Hours currently is.
Eight hours per month.
Sick leave and annual. And I think what I'm asking is, can we say that you can't take that until you have banked 40 hours? Or you can't use below 40 hours that, that, get that with the leave or something like that, can we?
I don't know about the second question, the first question you could to give them a threshold, like for a new employee for
Yeah, we don't.
It's almost like a probationary period, you have to work so many hours to accrue them in the first place.
Yeah, we do that in our, now, you can't use, uh,
Annually.
You can't use annually if you're in probation. And that was probably wound up, we had about 48 hours on the day they come off of probation.
As it's a bit annual, I mean, a monthly pay period. But once they accumulated it and it's accrued to, they can use it at any point after that.
So if they make a day, they can use that?
Yes, sir. You could say, for instance, you can't use it until a 90-day period is up, they will already accrue three days. It would really be, you, they can't use it till after 40 hours or I guess 48 hours to get through that first month's pay period. Then they'd be entitled to use that one day at any point.
You can't, you can't plan sicknesses or accidents or things like that, but, uh, if we have two buildings to use annually, can we deny one?
If it, if it would, if it would harm operations and the city could do what they need to do because they're both going to be out? Yes, sir, you'd want to be able to stagger them and I think that's proper.
I think we should do that.
Are, are you, do y'all think we're having that problem?
Yes.
That's right.
Yes, we are.
Yep. Yeah, well, you got two meetings and both of them go at the same time.
Right, the policy then is, you know, whoever gets there first with the request for the time off, that can be approved, subject to approval. And then whoever comes in second, they'll have to accommodate that absence.
Do you go by who gets, who puts there, uh, leaves, do you have to infer it or do you go by senior?
I would go by who puts in the first.
If they both have leave, whoever asks for a certain hour, we have first deal from that then. If we decide at a workshop kind of what we like, you can have it for the wording.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions about that, we discussed it some time ago, uh, we need, we need to really take, take that and look at it and, and that'll have to be done before we get some of those things though. We've got, we've got a little speed now, but we do need to do that.
On sick leave and annual?
On sick leave and annual because we, we fixing to hire another person here. We realize this is going to be four hires in the last year. We've got, we've got Tim, Dad, that's Robin and whoever this is, you know? If we invest in, and, and, of course they have an investment into, they get insurance and things like that, but we, we need them to be here to work. Uh, can you do ethics training?
I cannot.
Okay.
You wouldn't want me to do your ethics training.
Okay.
I don't believe, I mean, a few quite claim they'll do a great ethics training.
Okay.
Grimsley and Associates, they give a great ethics training. And when I say great, I understand ethics rules obviously, but they have prepared PowerPoint presentations they've been putting on for years. They're very quick, they're concise, they've got good examples, good real world stories, I would go with one of those guys. Of course, you can do the online version too, like me and Mr. Parker talked about before the meeting.
We, we've done that the last two years or three years.
Two years, I don't have to go have any person training this year with leave or not, because things that I've heard.
You remember John Rawkins?
No, sir, not familiar.
Bay, Bay?
Bay Solutions.
Bay Solutions.
Bay Solutions, yeah, he used to do it when we, when we first, when the requirement first was, we began to, we had to, we needed vocational school. Very informal, meeting room, probably dozen people. Now, or later, the four leading cities began to do it and you had more people with, all over. Did not Mr. Buettman do it for us one year or did he do something which?
No, he done electric, new electric official.
New official training, okay.
Would you like for me to check with a few quite a little time, see when, because they used to do it over very young, it'd be convenient or, you know, relatively convenient.
What I'm thinking is that we were all able, when we hit our computers, I, we can do it wherever that's on our, but then we might not know who's asking more questions, but we resolved it, one of these trainings together like we used to when it first come out.
Yeah, always legal, go again.
We'd hear, we'd hear the, we'd hear the questions, not only that we ask, but that other municipal authorities ask if we might want.
I think Fuqua is, is free too, I don't think that's charged for it.
Yeah, let's, email me that.
Would you?
I'll text him right now, if y'all don't mind me picking my phone up. If you'd please check, and he may, uh, be in a meeting himself and respond right back to me.
And the other thing I was going to ask, my question on that was, uh, about opening of the fire department and it sounds like it's getting closer.
Yes, sir. They said they may be able to do it as early as the 27th of August, but if they can't get there, and I said, we don't want to do it Labor Day weekend. We want to do it when the community, I said, but the council needs to know because they have, they indicated that they will provide the food for the community dinner, you know, the council will and the fire department will prepare, you know? The, the barbecue, you know, we'll get the size, we'll get them ordered from somewhere catered in, you know? But they do excellent, you know?
I know we're not going to do it for fun day because that's not too much.
No, we don't want to mess with that.
And I would keep it away from any other thing, I'd rather focus to that, the focus of that day to be on our new building, that our, our new facility and, and our fire department, things like that, that's my, that's my preference.
And to give Adam his D V S work dealing generally over there, y'all need to go look at it, everything's been done, it's Adam has done.
I don't know if there are any that can use there.
Looking to you?
He's looking to us.
I took, I called him, uh, I, the fires that's going on back in the spring down in Bay County a few months ago. Our, our church, uh, that's a part of the convoy of hope and they brought food, they served the first responders and some things like that and brought lots of things in there, one of the things they had was like a bag or it probably was in a box one time, uh, those big dry socks and things like that. And they begin, after they begin to fold up, they, they, uh, left some of them to give to our fire department. And I went in over there and told Adam I was going to leave them over there. And I've seen some work, but I didn't know it would have been completed.
Yeah, complete, yeah, it's been as long as, yes.
Did you get any or you just, you just?
I just, well, I just texted, yes, sir. Went through and get you that.
Okay, well, you're next on the agenda if you want to share, if you have.
I don't have anything to report, I'll just report back to Ms. Margaret on that when he responds to.
Okay.
And let y'all know, they usually do it, I think, first of September.
Not a good one.
So that you'd have time to plan for it. And I think they're on Saturday morning. And there'll be several business values, there'll be town Marianna, I think, the Jackson County County Commissioner to go.
And then you could find a good breakfast.
How you doing? Okay, and, and so that we know, uh, I, I think we're fortunate enough, uh, the talent and the, the abilities that we have in our employees and like that, but, um, I started, I went, I came to my wife, she had to go out, it had to be like, that flower bed you saw me setting, as you told everybody about. I started here, I went all the way down, I did pruning weeds at that flower bed. And when somebody, when somebody, when we take the work over there, or if we got to do the cemetery, it's like Diddy said, you had to even grind it off just a little bit at a time. You work it down that road and you work it back, you got to do something, eight hours a day, 10 hours a day. So we all too, it's, it's, you know, whether it's power tools or not, we're going to pay you 10 hours a day. You need to be somewhere finding something to do for 10 hours a day. That's, that's my opinion as a guardian of the cities. Anything well from anybody? Thank you again for coming tonight, sir. Anything from the council? Doesn't switch the court, listen, okay? I'm sorry, what was your name?
I'm Detective Edge.
Edge?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll put that in our, thank you for being here, we'll stand your